...that we submitted, but also give a lot of guidance and feedback regarding any type of in-person return to school. So Dr. Sue is one of our parents, who is an epidemiologist out of Harvard, and she'll kind of go through more of her background. But throughout the presentation, after Dr. Sue's presentation, I will be working and presenting the task force and kind of the work that we're doing. But for our community and getting the input from a lot of the professionals that live in Newburyport, who have children in the system, the team that I think we assembled, I think really is a multiple stakeholders throughout the community and really providing us some true insight on our plans and a safe reopening as we move forward. So with that being said, I would like to turn this over to Dr. Sue, who's part of our task force and also a parent of four children in the district.
Can you do any voice sharing, please?
Yes.
I just wanted to attest, can people hear me? If you can, give me a thumbs up. It's great to be here tonight, and I wanted to give you a bit of a perspective, you know, how I see things with the school, but also different conversations that have happened at various different levels among different task groups and different people trying to think about the best ways that we can think about this upcoming fall and what potential models we could follow and what would seem feasible. But with that, I want to give a little bit of background just about me and my perspective about the school, particularly as it pertains to my family, also my career, and then the broader community. So this is a picture of my family. I have four children, and I have one child actually at each school in the Newburyport system. So William is at the Resonant School. The family is going to be at the Mullen this year. Lily is at the Knott's, and Christian is at the High School. And then my husband is actually a local family physician in town. And so he sort of brings the perspective of seeing what's happening in the community just from people and, you know, instances of COVID, et cetera. But professionally, I want to give you a little bit of background onto how I see things and why that may be different. First and foremost, I will say I am a teacher. I am not as much of a teacher as a lot of people on here know, because I only teach every once in a while, but this is actually the last thing I taught prior to COVID. This is a picture of me in a class of Egyptian doctors, actually, as in Egypt, teaching a course on research for health professionals. And as I said, I am a mother of a broad range of kids. I also am an epidemiologist too. When I look at something like the COVID epidemic, I think my perspective can be a little bit different. And I'll give you a couple of examples of why that is. Number one, the idea of an epidemic like this is not news. I remember in my PhD thesis, one of my best friends did her PhD on what conditions would need to happen in order for the 1918 swine flu to happen again, Spanish flu to happen again. And so, you know, it's something that's come up in discussion many times. I also, when I'm able to listen to the news, et cetera, when specific words are said, the way that I internalize it is quite different, I would say, than a layperson, because when specific terminology is used, I immediately know exactly what they mean and how they gave the analysis, what was done, et cetera. So it gives me a different lens of how I'm seeing things and how I'm seeing sort of the disease progress and change. You know, as an epidemiologist, I also am passionate about public health, and I'm also affiliated with the Women's Hospital, where I've done a significant amount of research looking at COVID in our wider state area, looking at cases and exposures and causes for exposures, health disparities, et cetera. I'm involved in a wide range of studies that I won't go into a lot of detail, but to give you an idea of the types of studies, working with some people on what's called precision medicine initiatives or vaccines, and what does that mean? A lot of what that means is, once a vaccine becomes available, how do we disseminate that? Because that's going to be an even bigger problem than what we're seeing nowadays with testing. So can we do things like take a blood sample and look at the population, maybe the population particularly of younger people, not quite those in their 70s or 80s, but a little bit younger, who may seem like they're immune, they look healthy, but actually pinpoint the population and say, oh, this person is at a lot more increased risk to having a very severe reaction. This person may be a little bit more increased. But if we can do things like that, we can actually disseminate the vaccine in a logical way. And actually, this is a picture of me up here, and then another picture of me as a kid of a lecture I'd given a while ago, just pointing out that when you look at me, you may not think I'm vulnerable, but when you know more about my background, you may see I'm more vulnerable and want to think. So I want to talk a little bit about where we are as sort of a statewide perspective, and what that means for how we are looking at schools and potential mechanisms for coming back to school, et cetera. You know, so as we've heard all the spring, have we flattened the curve? Flattened the curve. You know, have we flattened the curve? And I will say, of states in the Union, we have done one of the best jobs in flattening the curve. But when you look at the public cases and new cases rolling out, as you see, you know, it gone from phase one to phase two to phase three, there is an increase in cases, there is just somewhat an increase of cases, and that is something we absolutely need to be aware of. I mean, in addition to the fact that a lot of our country that is not immunosuppressed. But I want us to think about this in several perspectives. So the state prevalence now is around 2%. But when we look at the state prevalence in Mass, I think it's important to know that while, you know, not everyone who teaches at the Newburyport Schools or whatever is directly from Newburyport, when you look at this region up in the northeast part of the Mass of the Bay State, it's one of the best regions of the state in terms of the prevalent cases. And actually, while the numbers are about 2% statewide and are incorporating some of these hotspots, the numbers in Mass and Newburyport are quite a bit lower and compete a lot of the surrounding towns. So why is that important? I mean, I think that's important because what we're seeing on a state level isn't necessarily totally reflective of what we have in our current town. And I think that a lot of mechanisms have been put in place by people in charge of our town, like the mayor, to keep us safe. Another thing I want us to think of when we see this number 1.59, that doesn't mean 1.59% of the population walking on the street has COVID. The far majority of those cases are in quarantine or are in nursing homes and not walking around. So the number actually that are likely out in public is far lower than 1.59%. So with all that good news, I also want us to be thinking, though, of a couple other things. One is, with a lack of testing that we have, we are always, and the way that this disease progresses with being asymptomatic, we are always about two weeks behind in the information we have. So what does that mean? It means that what we're seeing today is reflective of our behavior two weeks ago. And I think that's important to be mindful, is with a continued lack of testing, it really hinders our ability to have precise measurements of what's the current state now. And the reason why that's important is because it could increase quite quickly, and if we aren't keeping an eye on that, you know, then we could end up in a dangerous place. However, when we said that, I think, you know, if we look at where we are, if we look at a lot of the big figures that we instituted, you know, in this local region, and maybe Newburyport is surrounding towns, I think we've done a pretty good job at keeping things at bay. So I want to now talk about the different schools we have and different things that committees from Jean Galer to the principals to the task force had discussed, and decisions that have been made that are very broad decisions, but that really reflect our universal view of how we would envision any type of opening up of the school in a hybrid model. And, you know, I think there's some universal things we can agree to. Now, I want to pause here and say that there are a lot of people and a lot of teachers that have extenuating circumstances, or students with extenuating circumstances, someone in the house who's at risk, things like this. When I'm talking about this on a universal level for all schools, those are specialty cases that we encourage you to reach out to. But what we were aiming to do is to create universal systems that we feel would provide the most protective environment for all of our schools. So what are these universal needs and supports? You know, the Safe and Health and Wellness Task Force, in our discussions, we talked about four general areas: teacher and student safety, classroom setup, visualization, details and protocols that need to be put in place, and setting up our school system in a success type way. So I want to go into that a little bit more. You know, when we think of our teachers, staff, and students, obviously, one of the key things is, if we went back in a hybrid-based model, that we implement as many aspects of social distancing as possible while still meeting the needs of the students and the teachers. And that makes different, like different majorities, and we're going to talk about that in a little bit more detail, but the importance of promoting safety via the social distancing. And the idea here is to implement safety measures within our schools that keep you safer than after you're at school, maybe you stop at the grocery store on the way home. But we have designed an environment where you're safer at school than maybe getting your groceries on the way home, or stopping to pick something up, or maybe you decide to go downtown for dinner outside. So we want to make sure that it's an environment where teachers, staff, and students know we have put measures in place that are going to optimize their safety, and that that is our primary concern with a hybrid model. So let's talk a little bit more about what that may mean. As Sean has mentioned, on a state level, recommendations were three feet between desks in a classroom. You know, when the Health and Safety Task Force went and looked at these different models, one thing that was completely clear about that three feet distance was it really did not create any type of atmosphere that would make you feel, or make someone feel like social distancing is of utmost priority. Yet having that six feet distance between desks really created visually a different environment and enabled students to walk up and down the aisles while still being separated from their classmates, had really created just a mindset and assurance that there is no level of, you know, aspects of too close contact. So we really felt in a classroom setting, a six feet distance between desks and a six feet social distance and something we'd want to have as our primary goal was a good idea for all those reasons. Another thing we felt was, in order to promote social distancing, we want to really create a difference in mindset and a setup where students can easily see and naturally follow into patterns. So having visual cues throughout our school that remind students and teachers of particular things that can help with social distancing, for example, where to stand, you know, what direction you're going to be walking in. Different protocols also for entering the school building, which may be different based on age or based on various different demographics. So all these protocols that are put in place that really help both visualize success, but also have a change in mindset, that school is going to be a bit different. One of the last things that we have created throughout all three of our schools is the concept of a cohort-based design to minimize exposure. And what do we mean by this? Well, you know, while we'll all be social distancing, even within groups of students, you will be keeping them in smaller units that stay together. So in the event of an exposure or whatever, we are able to follow and have contact tracing to sort of know who could potentially have been affected. You know, all of these safety measures are in addition to the protocols that we all have with mask wearing and encouraging that at all levels throughout the school. But this cohort design, that puts another layer of safety where there's not just exposure throughout the whole school, but it's limited. So while there are a lot of sort of universal systems that we want to implement in all of our different schools, we also want to recognize that we play differences between the students and teachers' needs at the different schools. And I'm not going to go into this in great detail, because this is really one of the tasks, I think, that we're just embarking on in really delineating out all of those differences and how we can nuance this bigger system to specifically meet all of our individual schools. However, having said that, I want to give some particular highlights of things that have come up that we think are important. In the Resonant School, you know, we have to acknowledge, we have this incredibly wide age range of kids, starting from three-year-olds, who really are just being exposed to a school environment. There's anxiety about being separated from their parents, as some of the preschool teachers pointed out. The preschool teachers have a different level of responsibility in terms of safely potentially going into, interacting with someone, and going away, and how is that going to look? How scary are masks to little kids who've never been in a school building? Developmentally, you know, younger children, it's hard to even grasp this concept of what is social distancing. And trying to have, in all of these different settings, adequate measures to support and protect teachers are different details of the protocol that we're trying to look at now. One of the good things about a school like the Resonant School, though, is because inherently it's set up with specific teachers and specific students in classrooms, this cohort model of limiting exposure becomes much easier. The Knott's Mullen is a bit of, you know, different challenges here. The Mullen, a lot of what applies to them is obviously more similar to the Resonant School. But I put the Knott's Mullen together because it is one physical building, right? So these children are going to be in the same physical space. We also have to acknowledge that this is the first year all the students are coming to school at the same time, which is also a different problem. We have to also realize that, you know, we're talking about fourth graders through eighth graders. So developmentally, while I think the fourth graders have a mindset that is able to sort of abide by social distancing more, the older kids are giving a little bit more to the invincibility of the adolescent mindset. So there's all of those complications. Other things we're taking into account, of course, is the Knott's has a completely different model of school than the Mullen. And, you know, that is, we have Crimson and Gold, and we have a standard group of teachers for Crimson and a standard group of teachers for Gold. So what model would we use to limit exposure in that type of setting? And these are all details that have been worked out, and there are models and plans in place. So finally, we want to talk about the high school. And when we think of the high school, from a standpoint of putting in some type of hybrid model, it clearly seems the most challenging, because individual students have individual schedules, and it's very difficult to do any type of generalized way where we can group students together. They have different electives. There's also the added challenges of different grades have different needs, such as college prep for the seniors and orientation to a new high school for the freshmen. So given this, that the different models that have been looked at for containment in a cohort-type setting are quite a bit different than what we're seeing at all the other grades. And there are several different viable models that are in the works, but suffice it to say, it's going to be quite a bit different of a system. The other thing I think we need to acknowledge, and I'm sure all the teachers are well aware of this, and I am well aware of this, is the adolescent high school model of mindset of invincibility. You know, this has nothing to do with them, they're fine, they're healthy, it doesn't matter. But, you know, dealing with that and recognizing that still in that case, there are ways that we can implement protocols that really do create limited exposure. And, you know, these details are going to be rolling out in upcoming weeks, and so we'll hear more about that. But I just wanted to give an overview that these are all things that we've been thinking of, and it really does drastically change how we may treat one school versus the other in the way we would put a potential hybrid model. So I'm going to close with a few comments and summary points here. As I said, this isn't to provide all the answers to every question, it's just to provide a broad framework of how we are operating and how we are making decisions to answer questions tailored to different schools. Again, this isn't going to meet everyone's needs. We recognize that there are individual teachers or students that this system, no system they work for, because they have different, they're immunocompromised in some way. Those are situations, again, that really encourage, you know, to reach out and have other conversations about. But when looking at the potential of implementing a hybrid model, right now, it really does seem like our area, and not just Newburyport, but Newburyport and a lot of the surrounding towns, are still in a safe place with very low prevalence. And a socially-distanced hybrid model, in many ways, is the best model, especially if you're thinking of optimizing several things. And one is optimizing the student educational experience, where it gives students and teachers the ability to actually have some type of physical connection, where they know their students, and the teachers know their students, the students know their teachers. It also enables some level of school spirit by being able to come to the building. It also promotes mental health for students who really struggle with just being at home for long periods of time and may not have the supports that they would need in a completely remote system. This can really help bring those people, those students, into a supportive environment. But in a hybrid model, we really want to create a scenario and a mindset where social distancing is naturally becomes the way people interact. The cohort creation is one of the approaches we're using to limit exposure, and we're going to have visual cues throughout the schools to help promote this. You know, I can't emphasize enough that individualization is going to be needed for all the schools, and the models are going to look quite a bit different. So that in thinking of these models, we're trying to optimize protection of everyone with optimized and the highest level of academics that we can achieve with also promoting mental health. In the upcoming weeks, I know we're going to be creating various protocols for potential needs for testing, but more so than anything, and I'm sure Sean will speak to this as well, this is a dynamic process, and we're establishing initial baseline work to set this up for potentially entering the hybrid model and queuing us off in the years of testing. However, we understand this is a dynamic process. Things could change, and I'll get to Sean to sort of address some of those issues. But if we start it off in this system, we're also going to be adapting and changing for better solutions. We're also going to be adapting and changing as COVID goes changes. So while these are the general frameworks we're looking at, you know, the details and the ways this is developed is definitely going to be one of the best processes. So with that, I'll hand it over to Sean for the commentary.
Right. Did you want to?
Yeah. Yeah, hi, Dr. Sue. I actually had, I think we may have some questions, but I had a question to just get you to comment on that came from a teacher at the high school here. And that was, do we know what is going to trigger moving back into an online, fully online model? How would we be making judgments about that?
Right, and I actually think that is a great question and relevant. I mean, you look at our country, right? You've seen in the last several weeks, let's say what has happened. A lot of countries, a lot of states have made a lot of bad decisions and are not in a good place. So we are going to be looking, number one, to the state for guidance on those regulations. I have to say, I think Governor Baker did a great job the first time in his decisions in shutting us down. So we're certainly going to be advised by that. I think there's also going to be, there's ongoing discussions among different task forces also about additional measures we may implement here.
Thank you, Dr. Sue. Are there other questions from school committee members? Okay. Dr. Sue, thank you very much. This has been posted, Sean, on the website?
This?
For this presentation?
Yes, we're recording it now, and then we'll end up posting this after this meeting. Plus, it was part of the package that went out.
Great, thank you. We will now default to our original agenda.
Yes, and I just want to also thank, you know, Dr. Sue. She's, we're also working with the faculty and gathering a lot of their questions and concerns, but Dr. Sue's made herself available to the faculty, to some of the walkthroughs, and then through the task force. So we really appreciate her efforts in helping us out, because she's also working full-time for Dr. Fauci and getting his data that he needs for the nation. So her expertise has been very beneficial throughout the process.
Thank you. We will move to the consent agenda. Do we have any warrants, Mr. Colby?
Yes, we have some warrants, four warrants. First one, I moved that the following name bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amount in the aggregate $26,201.11. Be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There were no conflicts.
Second?
Second from Mayor Holliday. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? And these are already signed. Right, okay.
The next warrant, I moved that the following name bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $75,200. Be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There were no conflicts.
Second?
Discussion? None, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None, passes unanimously.
The next warrant, I moved that the following name bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $115,480. amounting in the aggregate $115,480.96. Be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There were no conflicts.
Seconded by Mayor Holiday. All those in discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes.
And the final warrant, I moved that the following name bills of the Newburyport Public Schools amounting in the aggregate $278,343.41. Be approved and forwarded to the city auditor for payment. There were no conflicts.
Second?
Mayor Holiday, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? I don't, I don't believe that there were minutes in the packet. Okay. We are going to move on to a period of public comment. And I think the arrangement has been that people have been making their comments in chat.
Yeah, you just might want to make sure they identify themselves. And then we can read their public comment aloud.
Okay. So how are we doing this?
They can type right into the chat.
Okay. So please, please, please identify yourself and put in an address and make your comment. And we will be reading them aloud?
Yes. Or for the people that are, it's up to the vice chair. If there are people there, they can unmute themselves and put into the record. It might be easier than using in the chat.
Right. I'm still a little unclear about how we do it.
Well, what I'm going to recommend is we were going to go live through the cable, and we're going to utilize the chat as a public comment. But since many of the people are out there, they have the ability to unmute themselves, identify themselves, and then put their comment into the public record. So it might be easier than I'm going to say.
So, Penelope, there's some echo. Everything is feeding back. I can't really hear what you're saying because when you're talking, it's feeding back from before. I don't know if you can believe it yet or not.
Yeah.
Is someone up there speaking back?
I'm sorry, volume off. It's from the computer speakers. My speakers and microphones off. Hi, I'm Ken Farnum.
Yeah, we're getting feedback that I think we have to, since we're here together, everyone's hearing each other. Usually when you zoom in here at your house, but since we're in person, it's creating a lot of feedback, I think, for the public. So I think when we speak, we should all be muted, and when we're going to speak, unmute ourselves. But at this time, we'd like to open a public comment to the people that are out there. We would ask you, identify yourself, and then give us your comment for the public record.
Right. And they identify themselves by chat?
Correct. Just telling us.
So yeah, I guess the system that we're using, that we've cobbled together here tonight, is that if you are interested in a public comment, identify yourself in chat, and then we will unmute you, or they will unmute themselves.
Yes.
To share their comment. We would ask you again to keep it within about two minutes and understand that public comment is a time where we're often gathering information, and it isn't usually a response, give and take.
Correct. And yes, good. I have, Mr. Zee has his hand up, so we can call him first.
Great.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Shereen Zee. I live on the Water Street here in Newburyport. And I just want to thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm really speaking as a parent. My daughter will be entering the fall. And I just had a series of comments, partially in response to Dr. Sue's presentation and just in general, I know you guys have put a lot of work into the task force. So these are my thoughts. Number one is, just as the parent of a younger child, I can't, I don't feel the importance of in-person instruction. I think everybody is staying experienced and so forth. But at the younger ages, it's very difficult to really get a lot out of Zoom. And I don't think that has anything to do with the instructor or the teacher. It more has to do with the children. So I just wanted to, you know, impress upon what maybe the importance of that to us here in this family. Second thing is, I really enjoyed hearing about the flexibility to change models that Dr. Sue mentioned. I think that's really important. And I hope that that can, you know, be considered to go either way. Obviously, if it's not going well, then perhaps we have to retreat more forward to remote or all remote perhaps. But we're trying to be hopeful, perhaps it goes the other way as well, and that they're picking up to go to more in-person instruction as time marches forward, even provided that the other educators are looking good. That was the second thing. The third thing was, I'm curious if the, you know, just thinking aloud, if the task force considered some really sort of way outside of the box thinking? Like, for example, I remember learning last year that sometimes high school classes were taught in evenings. And, you know, could we use our space and sort of think about it in different ways and maybe flex time more so that younger students could, you know, utilize the sort of the in-person space that we have across the district? In other words, not necessarily tethering the students to a certain building. It's a big idea to, you know, perhaps very difficult statistically, but obviously, I think everything's on the table. So, you know, ideas like that. I feel like older students, those in high school and so forth, they'd be able to get more out of remote. So the idea of being able to flex things out and, you know, perhaps using the buildings later into the day, if that allows for more students to come and go and maintain social distance and all of those good things. Three last comments. One is, just to note that I've remarked from a lot of other parents that there's a lot of discussion in the city across about, you know, students establishing so-called pods and those sorts of things and getting additional instruction outside. So I just want to mention that, you know, I think students are going to be seeing one another, and that the cohort model needs to factor that in. Is it better to have the kids coming in where we know who the kids are and when they're coming as opposed to them coming in, say, two or three days a week and then the other two or three days a week, you know, else would potentially receiving instruction? And the final one is, I did review the packet, but I'm hoping that there'll be some more explanation about exactly what the budget, there was a couple pages in the packet about the budget. It wasn't entirely clear to me what it was saying. It seemed like perhaps there was a shortfall, and that there was some effort to close that shortfall. Discussion on it. And I thank you very much for your time. Have a nice evening. I'm ready. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. We have Deborah Shepard. Your hands up. So there you go.
Hi. Thank you. I'm a parent of a student in the Breck in the animal in the dock. And one of my key questions that I had was, the presentation was well done in terms of epidemiology, but it did not address the issue of aerosol and the fact that the virus is airborne. And we really have zero information as parents so far as to how effective the H1N3 systems are in the different schools at reducing that virus loading. And whether or not these schools are going to be looking at creative models like these outside of weather, you know, be able to accommodate that, you know, using other public gatherings spaces like the senior center or the Brown School. We have a lot of other resources available to us, and I cannot, I just don't know as a parent whether or not those are going to be discussed. So I'd love to hear more about that. And just in general, having more transparency in the task force process. So the fact that I found this Zoom call by going through Facebook was great. I'm glad that I could join it today. I would love it if the task force meetings were also available on Zoom for us to at least tune in in a chat format at the very least, because I think there is a lot of expertise in the community that we can add to this conversation without necessarily slowing down decision-making. And then lastly, it seems like this discussion is leading towards hybrid of the foregone situation, and I would really push back on that in my conversation with teachers and also as a parent. And I would be focusing on strengthening, I'm trying to do as much as possible because anytime there's a spike, anytime there's kind of a want to come down, so good a problem, a bad part of the school may have to turn it up now. We really need a strong remote model as the leading force. And then we're trying to figure out what you're doing with the hybrid. So that's just my personal take on it. Thank you for the information.
At this time, Stella, would you like to amuse yourself a little bit?
Thank you, Sean. So my name is Shri. I'm a mom of two girls from the B at the Breck in the fall. And I always want to thank everybody who worked so hard, making the best of this this evening. I am a college professor, and I've been teaching remotely for several years now. And so I empathize with the faculty of the school who are now facing this personal vulnerability, which is not easy to do. I've gone through more than six months of training in this kind of teaching because it is a very different thing, and I work with adults. So I second, to Deborah, would just say, I'm hoping that there will be a hybrid model that be included for as long as possible, possibly going to full-time in-person later in the year. But I also plead with the hand of our victims, I that it has something to do with remote. And teachers, we have to support and train to do that well, especially people who are really gladly have found on the world. I think we should be person as much as possible, and for the youngest student. And one, so I come from, you know, both emphasizing with faculty and staff and really hoping to keep deaths safe, but also prioritizing students' well-being at the same time. The thing that I'm wondering about is, is that other countries in the world have done well. Who's failed me? Some of them. And you have data on what those lost to work. And I'm confused about why we're facing this when we are trying to figure out what? This is such a complicated problem. I'm pacified about how things happen is one way, but you know, how things, when people implemented different types of models is totally met. And to the best of my knowledge, the countries that failed them successfully without increasing infection rates were Denmark and Norway, where they went to full-time in-person learning for the younger students under the age of 10. So I would urge the task forces and administrators to look more closely at those models. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Amanda Zella?
After the end, just one good thing that I forgot to say. In the plans that we saw in the draft plan, what I thought was not particularly realistic was that the same teachers are going to teach students in the classroom and on the same day supervise both students that are going to be working from home from their same cohort. I just can't see how that could happen. So I thought those plans didn't look realistic for teachers to have in that.
Thank you. Amanda Zella?
Can you hear me? I apologize that I can't really do my videos successfully.
Yes, we can. Thank you.
There's a group of parents and some people who've been meeting, talking about what we do outside of school for the days our children are not in school. And my concern as an educator myself, especially around equity and the fact that on days when students are not in school, we have some very creative and resourceful parents who are creating groups or having a teacher or higher or able to support their students. I hope there is a mechanism, and a successful mechanism, is trying to identify students who are not socially connected or parents who do not have the resources either in money or in family or in just groupings that will be left out of these personal private considerations on the days students are not in school because the educational gap is going to get large quickly. And we will be able to see which students were able to afford support help or have a parent who wasn't working or who could devote the time on those remote learning days to support their students versus parents who either they were working either at home or off-site at their own work site, are not home and able to support those students while they're going through remote learning. Next concern to me, that basically concerns me that we're creating gaps based on students who don't have the resources, where the parents don't have the social connections on those days when school is not, when the students aren't on site. And I hope there's something in place to identify who those students are who might not be in those clusters or in those private cohorts or in those small groups that now have additional support either through a paid tutor or a parent who is not working and can devote the time and attention when the child is home and not at school. I'm really concerned about that. And I know that's not necessarily the school can fund million, but I do hope that there are these conversations happening about the potential inequity that was introduced into some of our education for many of us, especially our younger students.
Thank you. I give.
Okay, we will assume that public comment is closed for now. The next item on the agenda is a summary of the school committee retreat, which I will do very quickly because there's a lot of other things on the agenda. And we will have minutes before that meeting is done that can be available to school committee members. We had a presentation from Dr. Sue that was similar to the one we had tonight. We were updated on the potential three plans for reopening that the state required us to send in by the end of July. We've been discussing a resolution on equity and racism. We also had an update on learning and learning styles and ways in which we're going to be working with kids in summer school. We had an update on reopening, and we had a discussion about budget and the impact, the loss of revenues, who's going to have on our budget. We'll be discussing that a little bit more later. And again, we will have minutes available for the school committee and the community on the retreat. The next item on the agenda is an overview of the three-part reopening plans. Again, to be clear about this, the state at the end of July asked us to put together three plans. One was an in-person plan, one was a hybrid plan, and one was a full-on online plan. To submit those plans to the state, and then by August 10th, make a decision about which one we wanted to follow. So Sean is going to talk a little bit about the plans that went in.
Great. I'm adding more people in. For the cable, should I go up and do the PowerPoint up there so the VR recording? Or can I just do it through via Zoom?
You want to do both?
Okay.
You can do either or, but both are good. You go on Zoom and for the point.
And for the cable, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So Bruce, did you want to just follow up on a, as I just, I'm going to set this up.
Yeah, the idea of needing to be flexible, and we've got a living example right here. Sean is going to be setting up a presentation. He has a PowerPoint. You're actually getting a tour of the hallway outside of room 118. Sean moves through the building. Again, these three plans that the state asked us to submit were not necessarily highly detailed, but they just wanted to get a sense of how communities were going to be dealing with this. One of the things that the task force has really been aware of is the likelihood that we're going to be toggling back and forth depending on what COVID circumstances are out in the community. So even if we were to pick one of these plans and begin to work on that, there would always be ongoing work, particularly for a more robust online educational opportunity for kids. That work is absolutely ongoing. We're learning the lessons that we learned last spring. And that will always be available to the community as a default plan should circumstances call for us to do that. Great.
All right. I'm set in front of the room. All right. Can you see my screen? Struggling with getting to that play button. All right. Let me just, one more second here to make sure. All right. Well, first of all, I want to thank everybody for their patience. This, our first attempt on a full in-person meeting. We're really excited to have everybody in-person in our first meeting. And the original plan was, as we said, for us to broadcast live on cable, utilize the Zoom for the public comments so we wouldn't have the public coming in following the governor's guidelines of 25 or less people. But, you know, things happen and we're working through our technology. So with us, and I just wanted to touch base, we have over 70 members of the task force. And there were some questions and comments and we're going to save the chat and print out those questions and get answers to those. But our task force is made up of a lot of different parents. I'll highlight a few that have a great background and a lot of those questions. Obviously, the board of health is a big part of our task force and we have representation from our director Frank on there. Our school pediatrician, Dr. Lars Lundigan, is the other medical professional that's on our task force. Mr. Michael Allard, who's actually a commander for the Massachusetts MGH, and his role is significant as he developed and worked with the state and actually the federal government on developing protocols for the hospital personnel as they were coming back and dealing with COVID. Obviously, you all met Dr. Sue, who's brought a great perspective and aspect for us. We're also very fortunate to have...
I'd like to make sure that everybody in the room is on the room.
It's not going to just mean that your volume has to be off.
Your volume has to be off, not your microphone, your volume.
I turned off my auto altogether.
Yeah.
All good?
Yeah, my volume is partially up.
There you go.
So here we go. Echoes. But also Dr. Shanann Perthutzu, she's a clinical psychologist who's part of our social-emotional piece, providing a lot of great feedback. Ashley Wardell is a PhD nurse that's part of our health and wellness. Lori Burns is a business owner who actually brings a lot of insight on reopening and part of our facilities. Matt Marcy is also a parent who joined the task force. He's CEO of Fusion Cell, but his background was working with the military and military bases across the world in really taking a look at all kinds of natural disasters, but also pandemics and working with the military. And there's other parents, as I said, there's 70 different members on the task force, but we feel and we'll go over in the PowerPoint here tonight that they're giving us all kinds of perspective from facilities to the Department of Public Health to the social-emotional welfare of our staff and students. So we're getting a lot of, I think, insight as we're moving towards different models of the plan. So some guiding questions, and this started in June, really taking how Newburyport Public Schools have continued to advance the academic growth of its students. And then also, how can we safely reopen buildings? So this was kind of our thought process at the end of the school year, moving into the summer. I think for our goal is to generate a plan that fosters the confidence of the whole learning community, parents, students, faculty and staff. With the focus area, number one focus area for us is the health and safety of everyone in our school community and at the same time, looking at curriculum instruction and assessment. So in June, at the end of our remote learning, we surveyed parents along with students from grade six to 12 regarding remote learning. So we knew going into the fall, regardless of what the commissioner guidelines are going to be with the governor's guidelines, is that that was some really important feedback for us to move forward. So we really took a lot of the input from our students and also the parents regarding the remote learning. So Newburyport High School did their survey in June of 2020. So some of the results returned to school parents and students who are looking for a clear, manageable safety protocols that are in line with, above the state guidance. Confidence that everyone in the building will follow the protocols. Social distancing, or now we like to call it physical distancing, will be in place. Strong protocol oversight that does not fall on the classroom teacher. And if families have the opportunity to give feedback on the plan. So pre-K to eight surveying parents in grade six to eight on the left is the chart on what grade is your child during the 1920. So these are all the different parents that responded pre-K to grade eight. And then we asked the parents highest areas of concern upon student reentry in the fall. And health and safety was 53%, academics 51%, social emotional health 46%, adjusting to school routines and schedules 41%, and then re-establishing social connections. Very similar to the high school. So we wanted to give some feedback in the fall. If we cannot reopen as we normally would, what hopes would you have for remote plan? And these are just, we took some quotes from different positive and some also concerns. If the days, I'm hoping that all my children have the same schedule so I can return to work. That is something that parents expressed with multiple children in the system have the same days. Focus on grade level standards throughout the online instruction and have more curricular plans and assignments than just online programs. So very specific. Clear structure with live teacher interaction, so more direct connections with the teacher and child learning opportunities. And as you can see, there's a lot in here. I'll move forward on some of these others. If remote learning is required, there needs to be one-on-one learning as within the group. A more structured approach, regular class via online meetings, clear expectations of what needs to be done, all assignments are in place each day. So a lot of great feedback from parents regarding, as we were moving into the fall, how we could make the remote learning better for everybody. Some people thrived, so here are just some comments that people did well with the remote learning and then on the right side of some concerns. And we took all this feedback from all the parents as we started to develop over the summer on remote learning plans as we move forward. So there's some feedback, as you can see, one good feedback there, I hope they continue with homework hangouts, the Zooms for each class in there to help. All that was good and it was very clear. I hope that it will be as organized as it was this spring. I wish everything would stay the same as remote learning plan we already had was very reliable. So that was just some experiences and we really understand, this is why we ask parents their feedback, because not all experiences for children was the same. So for some of these parents, remote learning did not work for our family. We have two children on IEPs. As much as we tried to organize their day for the babysitter, often teacher assignments didn't come out until after we were both at work. I honestly don't see how our family could manage remote learning in the fall. I really hope there can be some in-person learning. Trying to homeschool has been extremely difficult as a working, single parent and both parents and kids became disengaged and frustrated when the constant changes and shifts with the schedule. Frequent Zoom calls, multiple emails with too much information and not summarized in a way. So what I want to explain to the parents in our community is our teachers, in June, we took a lot of this feedback and we already started planning through Assistant Superintendent Beck and a lot of the focus was taking what we did well in the spring and then really focus on the areas that we can improve. So that work's already been going on throughout the summer with our teachers. And Assistant Superintendent Beck will touch base on that. But I just wanted to share the good and the bad that we shared as a faculty getting prepared even before, as I said, the commissioner and the governor, knowing like we knew at some point, there may be remote learning and once that happens, we just got to, you know, get better at it. So here's just some district survey in July that we sent out. How many students do you have attending in the school district? So you can see, we do have multiple families with children. 45% have two or more children, 12% have three or more, and then we do have some families with four and five. So I have two daughters, so anyone who did three, four and five, you know, really, really proud of you guys. But I think that that's important so that first, the feedback from the parents is if there is going to be a hybrid or whatever, we're going to do for a plan to try to make sure or do the best we can to have those siblings all on the same day because it's a large majority of our families out there. So one of the questions we asked, if social distancing guidelines are met safely, precautions are satisfied, would you still prefer to have your child engage in remote learning at home five days a week? So it was yes, 16%, no, 76%, and then uncertain was 68%. And there were a lot more questions on the survey. I'm just highlighting a few here for tonight's presentation. And this was really important to us. If you answered yes to full-time remote learning, what were your reasons? So this, we're reaching out to families that really weren't going to send their students back and they were looking at full remote learning here. And you can see the feedback that we got, we pulled out a few. One was, we've been adhering to the rules, a large number of families in the district have not. I appreciate they all want to put their kids back in school, but they're not willing to do their part to ensure a safety for all kids. This is endless quarantines. So this idea of this parent not wanting to come back because feeling, as a community outside of school, we're not adhering to a lot of the, you know, and that's their perspective, not adhering to a lot of the safety protocols that should be in place. There is no way for schools to safely reopen during this pandemic. It places both the faculty and students in, you know, unreasonable harm. Combination of health concerns and risks, too great for my comfort level. And then we've adjusted, have high-risk person in our household. So a lot of this information is really important to us for those families that are choosing a full remote platform. Results from the hybrid model questions. If a hybrid is the model, what option do you prefer? So we put out there for a survey, a three-two split and not really knowing what the hybrid model is going to look like, but just to get a general sense. So 57% of the families like a three-two split or something like that during the week. Every other week was 20% and then 11% really had no preference. Other half-days was not an option, they preferred full-time. So there are different models out there, half a day and then send the students home. But this, one of the parents, the parents really want a full-day option if a hybrid model is proposed. If your child is learning from home, select the practices that would enhance your child's remote learning experience. This was also some great information. Live direct instruction. I think at this time, we pulled the survey, it's about 800 parents were surveyed and over 600 were very, this was their number one piece. Live direct instruction. Parents are looking at the daily schedule of courses, meetings and work plans. Live interaction for students at the start and the end of each day to frame the learning for the day. Option to receive printed materials from school and then regular feedback to students through Google Classroom. And that's just great information from the parents. This was one that we're taking a look at for transportation. You know, at the time we did this survey, there was no official transportation guidelines, but those have come out since the survey. But really just asked, what statement describes your plan for the fall? Blue is, I will send my child on the bus. I will not be using district transportation. So we're still going to sift through that, looking at our sign-ups for parents on the bus. The transportation guidelines have come out and I think it's typically working with Lee Lampkin and part of the district. It's about 23 students physically distanced throughout the bus, wearing masks, a lot of guidelines in place, but we can get about 23 students on each bus at this time. Daily task force. So we formulated a task force in July and the membership, as we were talking about, district administrators, principals, leaders, teacher leaders, board of health, parents, community members. So we took that big group and we divided the big group into six different areas. So you have a district focus, you have a social-emotional focus, curriculum instruction, technology, special education, facilities and health and safety. So for the district focus, we have community members, a lot of questions around daycare, a lot of questions for programming after school. We have Andy Egmont, who's part of that. We have multiple community members on our district task force that are assisting us with that. But as you can see, when we break down the subcommittees, we're getting a lot of great information, a lot of great questions moving forward. So the overview planning, we had two big areas, learning models and schedules. So the DESI, as Vice Chairman told everybody, required three plans to be submitted on Friday. So the three plans were full in-person back using a three-foot model, a hybrid plan of learning where half the students are in and half are out, and then a full remote learning model. We submitted those on Friday. The state's asking schools not to release a final plan until August 10th. So that was the big areas as we were talking about the planning. The second piece that is really important for us is developing a culture of health and safety for staff and students. And then developing the health and safety protocols for any type of student, staff or in-school, hybrid model or full-in-person are being developed as we speak. And then we continue with our ongoing meetings with our union leadership and then just shared concerns as personnel issues, health and safety protocols for staff, scheduling, and then also taking a look at childcare, which is very similar to the parents. So the learning models that we went through, and we'll kind of give you the thought process here. The first one was full-in-person learning. So it's in-school environment, modified by health and safety protocols, including using... including using a physical distancing of a three-foot minimum at pre-K, eight students traveling in cohorts based on three-foot spacing. So when we looked at a three-foot spacing in the classes, we would have 23 desks just in those classes. And when we set up the model classrooms for in-person at a three-foot minimum, you could really just see, as Dr. Sue said, even the people who are not the medical people, we had parents kind of look at that. It was just really impossible to utilize that three-foot spacing in every classroom to bring all students back and feel really comfortable. The other piece that we have on our task force is Pam Keely, our food service director. So as you're looking at breakfast and lunch throughout the day, you know, the idea is to have the students go back to the classrooms and eat. Well, part of the guidelines is a mask break. And if you had a mask break where you're going to eat your lunch, you need to be a minimum of six feet apart. When you're at three feet, there's no places for those students to eat. And plus, we didn't, I think I look at all of that, we didn't feel really comfortable with bringing 2,300 students all back together, even trying to use that three-foot minimum. It just, it was too much and it would have been too costly, especially with their health and safety. So the number of students in classrooms would vary on the buildings. A full-in-person program concerns around the number of people in the building daily and the ability to maintain physical distancing throughout the course of the day. And as Dr. Sue said, contact tracing and limiting exposure would nearly be impossible. Each building has unique issues at each level. And a full-in-person allows for a typical school schedule, but it would not allow for a lot of the guidelines that were required during this pandemic. So the hybrid model, K to eight. So a hybrid model brings 50% of the students in the building each day. Utilizing a three-two split or that type of scenario, you can easily cohort a group, so you could have half the students. And this is just some ideas. We've got a lot of work to do. But half the students would come in on like a Monday and Tuesday. A Wednesday, the students would be remote, where the teachers would check in in the morning. But what that allows us to do district-wide is thoroughly clean the buildings. We're going to be cleaning the buildings every day and every night. But on that Wednesday, before the next cohort of students comes in, let's say a cohort date, we can really clean all the schools and be ready for the next cohort of students to come in. So that allowed us to really concentrate on the health and safety. Plus a cohort with 50%, we can do the six-foot spacing, which is the recommendation spacing from the CDC, and then also the state. And not have to utilize that three-foot or less than a six-foot spacing. So that's the thought process of a hybrid plan. Every plan would offer academic connections for the hybrid for five days a week. So the students would be connecting with their teachers. Students on-site at least twice a week for the in-person instruction. And then a set of a remote schedule, live interactions with teachers and peers for the remote learners. So obviously, there's so much detail that needs to be added to the hybrid plan. But overall, in general, the hybrid plan satisfies a lot of the safety concerns that we have. And then also a lot of the different elements for like lunch, breakfast, things of that nature. So transportation of that, that's the hybrid model. The, does that continue? Do the various, hybrid models continue? So the high school may not be possible to have 50% of the student body in using a six-foot distance. So the team continues to work on options. The other piece that is not just unique to Newburyport, but it's unique to all high schools, is the idea to easily cohort a group of students and maintain the cohort model. So if there was a case, like if there was a case at the elementary or the middle school level, you could isolate that cohort, isolate that potential outbreak to one classroom or one student. The high school model is a lot more challenging. So Mr. Wolf and his team are kind of going back and looking at what an in-person hybrid model would look at the high school as we're developing plans. The full remote plan, each school has different operational details, but our remote models are developed with the following given. All schools would be utilizing Google Classroom and Google Meets platform. Curriculum would be graded and leveled standards. Students will have daily live teaching and interactions with peers, obviously all remote. And attendance is required. So there are definitely a lot of differences with the remote model moving into the fall than we saw in the spring. So the state's requiring grades to be given, state's requiring attendance to be taken. You know, our teachers have been preparing throughout the summer in preparation for some sort of remote learning throughout the school year. Work would be quiet and grades and progress would be monitored and reported to students and parents. Schedules would be clearly articulated, communicate with parents and students. Remote learning expectations would be part and reinforced. High-needs populations would be part of in-school options. That was one of our idea, when possible. And then parents and students will have a clear understanding how easily to get academic and technical and social-emotional support. So these are some ideas that are coming through with the planning of hybrid slash remote. Remote by choice. So this is a little bit different. So we're talking remote in the hybrid model is some aspect of remote. The remote by choice, we'll call it like our remote academy. So the state's requiring every district to offer parents and students who want the option for the remote only. So the remote academy will be separate from the hybrid model. So this is regardless of the model the district's running. So if Newburyport's running a hybrid model, we would need to offer a fully remote option. And that's kind of what we're talking about here. So the state's providing some ideas on how a district might run a remote option. For example, purchasing seats from a third-party vendor, subscribing to the DESI program. That's being developed right now, or designing a district-based program. So part of the remote academy, the state has a conference call with districts tomorrow. And Assistant Superintendent Beck will talk about that. They kind of give us an update on what the remote academy is going to look like.
Sean, can you give Bruce the rights to let people in, someone starting to come into the meeting? Including me, I got kicked out.
Yeah, Joan.
I'm trying to get back into. Do you have that, Bruce?
Actually, I just let him in.
Can you let me in?
Yep.
Okay, now.
Do you have a secret password?
No, I just let everyone in.
All right.
Sean, can I ask you a quick question?
Yes.
You said the state wants attendance taken?
Yes.
Does that mean that they are not allowing for any level of asynchronous learning?
Outside of me?
Yeah, so teachers give a project, students aren't necessarily attending in a particular day, but they're still, they're still working. Is the state not allowing any of that? They have to, kids actually have to check in every class?
Yes, well, attendance would be taken. So if he said, you know, here's a group project outside of, you know, the regular school day and you're going to need to be checking in with your teacher.
So asynchronous is dead at the state level?
I don't want to say it's dead, but we're going to be monitoring the kids, you know, as they, whatever project that we're giving them, attendance needs to be taken. So unlike the differences, as you know, unlike the spring where attendance was optional and grading, we're either doing pass, fail, or credit, no credit. This remote learning is really going to be monitored, attendance, grades, progress.
It's just funny how the commissioner gets up and he says, we're going to allow, it'd be a great opportunity for all this project-based learning and kids to go outside and community-based stuff. But then he's like, you have to take seat time attendance.
Yeah. Well, however that's going to look, I, attendance would be required.
Okay, just checking.
So this last area, so you had your three plans, but as we're talking about health and safety, I just want to quickly just give an overview. So as you saw from the surveys, the health and safety of everyone is paramount. It's on everyone's mind. And that's why I think it's part of the task force to bring in our medical professionals together. I think, I feel very fortunate as superintendent. There are other districts that don't have the expertise that we have on our task force and they're making decisions without getting a lot of the medical guidance that we're getting. So when we look at health and safety, there's not one step we can take to eliminate all risk. We need to do this and create a culture that values health and safety in community. We work together and keep each other safe. We build on positive behavior interventions, practice and force sheet expectation. And then we identified several primary areas to be emphasized. Complete daily pre-screening, where every time someone, staff, or students come into the building, there'll be a pre-screening protocol. Everyone obviously will be wearing a mask, except as we know, the guidelines for, will be encouraged at the younger levels, preschool to grade one. We'll keep safe physical distancing throughout. And then also, we have practicing good hygiene. So we're putting in protocols around all of these different areas. And then good hygiene is hand-washing stations. And we have portable sinks that we've purchased for the buildings for handwashing. District-level health and safety issues, COVID protocols, you know, deciding on a model of learning that's right for the time. And I think that I'll speak to that towards the end about the August 10th deadline. Managing staff and health and safety, rapid response to testing, sick days, FLMA. And then space-related issues, NHS classroom size, internal classrooms without windows, outside space options, and teacher classroom size. So all of these are under consideration as we move forward. And then signs, district-wide protocols for all schools, mask, six-foot distancing, daily pre-screening, and then staff training modules on the new protocols. So we've already ordered signage for all the buildings. So it's, you know, it's part of reopening schools. The students and the staff will see all the signs that we'll have throughout. And then continue work on the pre-screening. And then just so everyone knows, we've started summer school on a small scale about three weeks ago. And the nurses in Catherico, we've put in protocols in place and training the staff around those protocols. So we do have some, a lot of these in place. Obviously, as you're talking about some sort of in-person hybrid for the entire district, you know, those protocols would obviously be enhanced. And then building-based protocols. The administrative teams in each building have been working closely with Kathy Ricchio and Steve Bercon to create protocols for each area in the school and solve issues with spaces. Sneeze guide, signage, remove and store furniture. So we've taken all the non-essential furniture out of the classrooms to create more space. Each school has been developing extensive presentation to use for staff and student training, which is very important. It came out of our Health and Wellness, Social and Emotional Health Committee about reintroducing not only the staff to what school's going to look like, but really important, to reintroducing what school looks like for students. And start that process ahead of time because the, what students remember school looking like in March is going to be a lot different. And we have to get them prepared, I think mentally, for the changes that they'll see. And that includes arrival and dismissal times with buses. There'll be different entrances for different cohorts throughout in the building. For every building, the transition classroom setups with six-foot distancing. Bathroom nurses visits are a lot different. Lunches will be a lot different, recess a lot different, and mask, and mask breaks, hand hygiene, and then dismissal. So the conclusion, we submitted the three preliminary plans on Friday. We feel it's, for us, if we're looking at a district with 2,300 families, that a full in-person return at this time would not be possible. We will continue to provide information in school committee on a hybrid and remote plans to allow for a decision to be made. And then this is a fluid process that is responsive to challenging health climate, changing health climate, and the reduction in the school year 170 will allow our staff to fine-tune and operationalize the selected plan. So this is very important for us. And I think it's important to note for the faculty and the parents and the students that are listening. Once the school committee decides on what plan we move towards, in talking to Tom Scott and the commissioner, close up to the commissioner, that plan can continue to be refined, revised throughout. So if the school committee says on August 10th, hey, we're going to go with a hybrid plan, that plan is not etched in stone on August 10th. And that's, everyone, that's where we're going. What that allows us to do is continue to pursue a hybrid plan of some sort of in-person instruction that we would continue to vet from August 10th for the next two to three weeks. So we're all comfortable if we're bringing staff with students in person, that we've checked all of the different areas and we're comfortable. So the state understands, the commissioner understands, that on August 10th, if Newburyport's moving to a hybrid model. But as we vet the plan and as we talk, as we're looking at the health data, then we could have to change that plan and not do in-person and do the remote. So I just don't, whatever decision is going to be made for the district, we still have time to continue to fine-tune the plan that is selected. So I think that's an important piece.
I have two questions.
Yes.
Sports aren't anywhere on there. So when did we find out about what?
We're still waiting for guidance.
There's no answer from the state except for the mid-September MIA.
Yes, so they postponed the startup fall sports to September 14th. But they haven't made a decision if we're doing sports or extracurricular activities yet.
And the psychologist, we're not meeting on the 10th, are we?
At the retreat, we talked about setting the 10th aside so that we can at least endorse a plan the district to go forward with.
Do we have to vote?
Yes.
Are we going to not see that until the 10th? Because I don't like to vote on something.
No, no, we would say, we would say perhaps we would put together the hybrid plan and the remote plan.
Be available.
As much detail as we can.
Before Monday. Or Friday. Friday to the 4th. Or Friday to the 7th.
And a lot of the information that I've got, the general information that I've seen, and then some of the information heard from Dr. Silver also will be modified. Yes.
Thank you, Sean. I think you captured all the hard work that you've been doing for, you know, the last many months. The surveys, the questions from parents. I think some of those were reiterated tonight in terms of the chat. So certainly, I think we all recognize the amount of work and effort that you and your teams and the six, seven different groups have been working on. And thank you for that. In terms of the 10th, which is what I said on the retreat, that's the night that the city council is getting the final budget for the year because we did the continuing resolution. So since we will be focused on just voting on the plan, could we meet earlier that night? Because city council doesn't start till 7:30.
Oh, right. We talked about that, right?
We had been told, we had been told by Angela that the plan is due at 5 o'clock. So we had actually talked about meeting in the morning.
Oh, right.
We were going to zoom it like eight in the morning, right?
We were going to try to zoom at eight, like early in the morning. We were gonna try to zoom at eight, like early in the morning, if you guys would have that ready.
Okay.
Like an 8:00 and zoom next Monday.
Because I think what's also, this is hard for parents, you know, when you're just getting something the second week in August, and what if you have, you know, three kids at different age levels that all need childcare?
Right.
You know, so I think the sooner we can make a decision, and we had talked about that you could have, you could ask for a few more days.
You could ask for a couple more.
I don't think we should. I think we need to get a vote as soon as we're, you know, we should on the 10th, and to help parents over the last several weeks in August and early September, where they're trying to figure out, you know, coverage for their children.
No, I mean, I agree, and the other piece too is, as we said, if the school committee wants us to go down the hybrid plan, and we can give you as much information on the 10th, I just wanna make sure that everyone understands that hybrid plan, obviously, could change as we're looking at more information and health data, you know, so.
I think it's pretty clear that the direction at this point, given that even though numbers are just ticking up slightly in Massachusetts, what we're seeing in the rest of the country, we are not out of this at all. And the first, the highest level of concern in the surveys was health and safety.
Right.
So I mean, I think you're absolutely right to push for the hybrid model. We can always bring all the kids in, and we can always slip back into remote, because it will have had some remote, and I think it's the best balance there. But my concern is the young kids and special needs children. So just, I think we would definitely need a lot more detail on the younger children and the special needs children.
Is there gonna be some sort of, I guess, health briefing on a regular basis?
Yes.
So you and the city, and hospital, and whoever else is feeding us data to sort of make, because, I mean, it sounds to me like there are options of maybe quarantining one cohort, closing one building, or going remote for the whole district, depending on how things go. So is there like some sort of protocol?
Yeah, start, I mean, that's, that's the whole idea, is the start-start protocols, and as we're working on the pre-care, and this is all preliminary work with the task force, but by doing the cohorts, and then having the students aren't moving, for the most part, pre-care to grade A, the teachers be moving, so if there was a case or suspected exposure, you can really isolate that cohort, or even isolate that classroom, which is really important, but yes.
And for months, we've been having a weekly call, and then we start, when things started to stabilize in the city, we backed off with the hospital. In fact, we have a call tomorrow, because I reached out to Mark Goldstein and asked if the schools could get some support for testing teachers, because I think that's gonna be really critical as we go forward in terms of ensuring that, you know, we can rapidly test teachers, not send them home and quarantine everybody for a bunch of weeks. So we'll have more information about that after our call tomorrow.
And that's also very important, Mayor, because Dr. Seu is, and with the other medical professionals, it is really the development of cohort, and then the start-start protocols, and what's that gonna look like if there is a potential case in a school? And the idea is not to do our best to isolate that, so you're not shutting down the entire system. And I think what's also really important for us is the work on testing, as the mayor said, working with Integro or other facilities, if there is an exposure, a potential exposure, that we can test the teachers that may have been exposed rapidly and get results quickly. Okay. Oh, they can only hear me, okay.
Other question. Other question. Do we have any data thus far on parents that have already decided to opt out, either deciding to hope school, or whatever the remote option would be? Have we already had people come up and say that's what they want to do?
So we have, and the question is, they asked me to repeat the question, on data for parents and families that have already selected to opt out, full remote, we have some data on that right now. It was around, the time we did our survey, it was about, I think, 10 to 15%, but a lot of the parents haven't seen, you know, the plans moving forward. So we anticipate maybe 10 to 15% at this time that would be opting out. We've had some parents, not a high volume of 10 to 15%, but we have had, I would say, about 12 or so families that are gonna choose the remote learning, because people in the family are at risk.
Yeah. To families, I imagine they must have all the way up until probably the 16th of September, their first day of school, to let the district know.
Yeah, I think, so the question was, how long do families have to make a decision? I think for us, we would like by the start of school, by September, we would probably have a pretty good understanding of who's coming back, because by then, our plan, our protocols, everything we have in place will be published, and then I think families will be able to make a decision. You know, right now, if they're on the fence of full remote or hybrid, to contact the district, so.
I think that's gonna play a big role. Like if we could explain to people what the remote option looks like, I don't know what people assume the hybrid version's gonna look like, but I think that could push people one way or the other, the more detail we could explain it.
All right.
And I think also there's a question of whether or not they have to stay in it for the year.
All right.
So if you choose to go remote, and then, you know, at December vacation, miracles happen, and school opens up, can they come back in?
Right. So the question for the, was regarding the remote learning, you know, when would parents have to let us know, and if you chose to go fully remote, is there an option to come back if the data, or the hybrid, or things are working? But those are all parts of the planning that we would send out. I know there are some districts that are considering a date of remote, and then do a check-in at like six weeks. So if a family does a remote academy fully, after six weeks, the district would check back in with the family to see if they're willing to come back. So the frustrating piece, I think, for all of us as a school community, is all of our districts are kind of in the same predicament as us right now. We're making decisions, you know, about what plan we're gonna follow, and then we'll continue to work on the details in the next three or four weeks.
Sean, just to sort of clarify, it could go both ways. Somebody could start out in the hybrid and make a decision to step back to remote.
Yes, I think the question was, it could go both ways, and that's what, as we continue the planning process, I think there is gonna be an aspect of potential in-person hybrid instruction, and then remote, but there's also, remember that remote learning academy is something outside of the hybrid model. So as Assistant Superintendent Fex is gonna get more information from the state about the remote academy and the state's platform of accessing the standards and the curriculum. So that information is still, you know, out there, coming in, along with School Committee Callahan's question on athletics, which we also haven't heard a definitive answer yet.
If, if a student is in cohort A, and it's, they're supposed to be in school Monday, Tuesday, and they get up Monday and they're not gonna go to school, can't they still attend remotely, as if they were in cohort B?
Yes, so that, that's, when you're looking at the hybrid, there's gonna be the five days of contact with the teacher, either remote or in-person, and we're gonna also highly recommend for families, if someone is coughing, feeling sick, and all of it, stay home. So we're not, we don't want, it's not like the old days where we want our kids in school.
I guess what I'm saying is, they could choose to be remote, but still be included in the hybrid numbers.
Correct. So the remote is remote and hybrid, where the teacher is working with the cohort A and cohort B. The "I'm not coming back" is a separate, that's gonna be your remote academy, where we're gonna have teachers working with the students, fully remote, outside of the hybrid model.
Sean, I think what, I think the question Dave is asking is, if somebody is assigned to cohort A, and that's Monday, Tuesday, and they wake up on Tuesday and they're not ready to come into school, will they be able to do that day remote, even though they're not in the cohort that's doing remote? I think, is that the question, Dave?
Yeah.
So going on that, so the, the, we call it remote, we're from the academy.
Yeah.
So that's, that's alongside the same time as the people were in, that's not independent?
It's gonna be, no, the remote academy is gonna be outside of a hybrid model.
So the teacher's gonna be doing two?
So other, so the teachers that are doing the hybrid model, the classroom teacher is gonna be focused on cohort A, cohort B. The idea with the remote academy is we're gonna have other teachers designated for those students that are learning on the remote learning platform.
And we can do that with the same amount of staff?
Yeah. We'll, we'll get to see.
Yeah.
I mean, it's part of the district is the personnel piece still, where we do have staff that have underlying conditions.
Angela hasn't come, you just can't see her.
Yeah. You know, we will know more about this after the webinar on Tuesday, on Wednesday, but the state is planning on offering two options around remote academies for districts, because as you heard earlier today, it's really challenging for teachers to manage the hybrid model that will be partially remote and partially in-person. So for those students that are opting not to come back at all and be fully remote, that's why we're, as Superintendent Gallagher has been saying, that's why we're calling that the remote academy. It will be supervised differently, and we're hoping that the platforms that the state has chosen for that are gonna be good, viable platforms. But if that's the case, it will be for pay for districts, per student that goes to the academy, so they'll probably run for a semester. So as you were talking about students moving in and out of the remote academy, it may be on a semester basis that they might be able to do that. So we're gonna learn more about that, so I don't wanna get into too much detail, because I don't have the detail right now, but I think that we'll have a dedicated, we'll have some dedicated staff here who will oversee that, even if we use the state platform for it, to make sure all students are registered properly, that they're progressing as they need to be, all of that sort of thing.
Sean, if we have these many questions, the community is probably exponentially putting together questions, so as far as I'm concerned, I would really encourage your staff to focus on, over the next couple of weeks, putting together a robust hybrid plan, putting together the remote academy, and putting together a robust online learning plan, if it's not gonna be the academy, and be able to answer some of these questions, because, you know, time is, time is short, and we're not prepared to take a vote on the plan tonight, because we haven't seen it, but I also recognize it would be helpful for you to get some direction on what to focus your staff's energy on, and that seems to be it for me.
I just have one more question. So is the Wednesday of the week a remote academy thing, or just the teachers doing, here's your Google Classroom?
No. And this is the, right, and this is the guidance, guidance from the state with the full remote students, and that's why they wanted to create that.
Right, I know, I know, but the full remote's one thing, but the regular kids who are in school Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday, Friday, and Wednesday, they're doing what we did in the spring.
They'll be checking in with their schedule.
But way better.
Yeah, way better. Yep. They'll be very structured on that Wednesday.
Okay. I got a question, but it might be for Angela later, I don't know what Angela's gonna talk about later, but are you gonna get into it all with those now 10 days of PD at the beginning of the year? Is that part of your talk later, or?
Not part of my talk tonight, but I'll be filling you in on that.
Okay, yeah, I was just gonna ask, are we starting to think about that? What's, what's that, I mean, that's a lot of days, you know. I do think it's an opportunity too for the teachers to really, I guess, hone some of those remote learning skills, and then maybe actually see it from the student's perspective, so they can see what the project is going out as well, which we probably did have a chance to do before.
Right.
But yeah, so we're gonna hear about that later, that's.
The, I mean, just for the people, so the question was on the 170 days, and then there's 10 days in the beginning, the professional development for the faculty. So yes, we're putting together for those first 10 days for the calendar, the development of whatever plan that we have in place, but it's gonna be really taking a look at the remote aspect of the learning. And we'll give teachers 10 days before the start of school to really fine-tune those agreements.
Can we find out a way too, to, you know, we talked about teacher training for this stuff, I'm sure there's a bunch of parents out there who have no idea how Google Meets works and all that stuff, if they're gonna be some sort of, what was the word, I don't know. I would be able to figure it out, but there's gonna be a lot of people who'd be like, I don't know.
Yeah, like the information for talent.
Yeah. Brian, did you just volunteer to put together a?
I did not, no.
I was gonna double check.
I know, I didn't even ask.
I think Angela wanted to say something.
Well, I was just gonna add to, you know, a lot of the curriculum planning that's been happening this summer has been by course, so part of the work that needs to happen during our 10 days together is for all of the individual teachers who helped build those courses, to share it out with any of the other teachers that will also be teaching that course, and collaborate on how these pieces are all going to fit together, because they've been working on single puzzle pieces throughout the summer, and now all of that has to be put together for the larger picture, so that everybody understands how to follow that through.
I mean, it's a pretty amazing opportunity. How often do you get 10, 10 PD days with your whole staff to really concentrate on some, you know, bigger things than teaching a line, so?
Any additional questions, Superintendent? Hearing none, you can unplug. I would just note that we are now entering our third hour, and if there are items on the agenda that we think we can hold on, and the committee wants to hold on them, I will certainly entertain that. If not, we can just continue to work our way through.
Do we have to vote on the calendar tonight? Well, I guess you would, do you want, do we have to vote on this tonight?
Um.
The calendar discussion is never short.
Right. I think you could take a look at the calendar and.
I mean, because if we're gonna meet on Monday morning.
Yeah.
Right, can we just move that to then?
Yeah. I think that the only big piece is, you know, those professional development days, that's, that's a big challenge.
Right.
Do we think, do we see that as a, as a longer discussion?
No, I'm just saying historically, something else comes up in the middle, it's over. If it's gonna be something simple as, hey, can we do this, but not talk about moving anything else, then we can do it now. Sean really wants to say to everybody, this is when school starts.
That, that would be the, that to me is the factor, the sooner that we can tell parents, this is what, this is what the day, things are gonna be. So I'm, but I'm totally open.
There was a parent who brought up the fact that with this current calendar, if we do the hybrid plan, the students who have Thursday to Friday learning will miss out on more learning due to Friday holidays, and she recommended that we possibly move the early release days to Wednesdays, that we consider that in the plan, because that would make it more equal for the two cohorts.
That's a really good one.
Okay, so we have to make some modifications to the calendar, so let's look at it on Monday.
Okay. I'm just gonna say that Monday morning has to be quick, because it's a workday, and I'm supposed to be working Monday morning, so I'll sneak into this Zoom, but I can't have a long meeting Monday morning. So if we can't talk about it tonight, because it's a long discussion, Monday morning's probably not gonna work for me. So if we can't talk about it tonight because it's a long discussion, Monday morning's probably not going to work for me.
I know, I know, I know.
I'm in the same boat, I mean.
So.
Do we want to then just focus on voting on the model on Monday morning? And then schedule a Tuesday night follow-up school committee meeting to deal with the remainder of this?
We will be the next, the 17th as well.
Well, I just think that's counter.
Would just be, or tonight would be just, yes, school starts on the 16th. And then we talk about the other.
Other pieces of it, and professional development and all of that.
I would motion to do that.
Second?
Discussion. So the motion, the motion is that what the school committee is is, my understanding.
You're explaining, okay.
Yeah, that's what I'm going to do. My understanding is that the motion is that the school committee is approving a school, first day of school start date for students of September 16th, is it?
Yeah, yeah, no.
September 16th?
Sixteenth, yeah.
And that we will reserve for further discussion, early release days and other items in the calendar, how we're going to use professional development. But that that what we're voting on is to approve that school will start for students on February, on September 16th. Is that a fair statement of the motion?
Yes.
We can still discuss that, right?
Yeah, no, we have a second, we have a discussion.
Okay. So Sean, before you talk about banking for those 10 days, did we find out that we have to do those two 10 days? That's what I question.
Yes, the the recommendation is, since it was worked out with our MTA to utilize those 10 days for training, but the two scheduled days that we had already scheduled, we can move those at a later date.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll have two extra days of PD.
All right.
All right, did you mention Tuesday and Monday, Tuesday already?
Correct, which would be useful if we have to toggle back and forth.
Yeah.
My recording is right, that the motion is to, the first day of school will be September 16th. That's the school start date, and you reserve discussion for calendar changes for, to the next school committee meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to make sure.
Any further discussion? Mr. Cole?
So you guys think about, just to be a devil's advocate, what happens if something cranks up between now and September 16th? Whether it be increase in active COVID cases, the state shifts gears. We going to be able to, as a school committee, maybe amend our decision?
We would imagine so.
I would assume so, yeah.
Yeah. I think that's one of the reasons why the teachers reunion wanted the 10 days for training, but to also, it gives some more time to to see what happens these next couple of weeks.
Yeah, I just think the things are really fluid and, you know, you also have the Labor Day holiday. And again, the experience has been that most people are respecting the physical distancing and the group stuff, but there's also a good number that aren't. So I just, it's just a concern of mine as a committee. I'd like to know that we can get back and, you know, make a good decision should the environment change with respect to that.
Yeah, I think the answer is yes.
And if I, if I may, and I think that was part of my conversations with the state to understand that this situation's fluid. And right, you know, next week or if we're thinking we put together a great hybrid plan and it's going to look great, but all of a sudden, three weeks from now, we need to change course. That is, that made me feel more comfortable throughout because ultimately, the the health and safety of everybody is paramount. And and I think we're going to have to move in and out depending on the circumstances around us, so.
Dave, do you have a question or comment?
Before then, can you guys please just consider trying to keep some level of consistency? So if we're going to have Wednesdays at home, could we move the early release days to Wednesdays? I'm just, like, I'm looking at this as a parent. If I had elementary school kids, this would put me over the edge to have to figure out, oh, I can work Tuesday this week, but not next week. And the following week, it's going to be Wednesday. It's like, like, we have to have consistency. And I know we're we're like excited about the amount of PD days, PD days, but parents have been home with their kids trying to get to work since March. So I I think we should think about limiting the amount of PD days we have during the year as much as possible, even though I know how important they are. At some point, if we think getting back to school is important, we have to think about getting back to school and trying to do it consistently.
Yeah, and I think that that, the early release that we've scheduled, you know, I think that that would also, I mean, if we if we actually are doing a hybrid and you have your two cohorts, I think the first early releases in September, I think those would all be pulled off the table, especially if we get kids back. So I think those discussions are, as School Committee Board said, you get the full 10 days, we can bank the other two. But some of those early release days, if we have kids back in the building, I would not, we could probably hold off on those to have the consistency.
Thank you.
I mean, early, what's, who's in December? I mean, it's really just one Friday and then Election Day. So, I mean, again, hoping that things can change, but.
We can have a, you know, a more in-depth conversation about that in our next meeting. But yeah, but but is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion is stated. Aye.
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 Is there anybody opposed? Motion passes unanimously, the start of school is moved to September 16th for students.
I apologize, all my devices are dead, so I'm off the Zoom.
I'd offer to invite you to my table, but that whole social distancing thing is, you know, model that behavior. Um, the next item, um, the next item on the agenda is operational guidelines for pandemic. Uh, Dave has circulated a draft. It began to be developed during the retreat.
I think we need our model before we can vote on this.
Sean wants these as a, as guidelines to help them pick a model, to help us pick a model. So these weren't. So Sean, it's up to you. If you if you want us to talk about it now, we can. If you don't, you asked for them, so they're.
Yeah, I think we we can table this. And, you know, the idea of the guidelines is, as we're moving forward with the planning, is similar to late start, the school committee, I thought, did a great job in developing guidelines of developing late start plans that would help maximize the most people. And I think we should take that same approach. But I think for tonight, we can put this off to the side as we start to, you know, the different plans.
Because I I think that it'll probably change.
Correct.
You know, so I think it makes sense for us to hold on that, at least until we vote on the model on the 10th and then the 17th, we can take time to do that.
Do the guidelines.
Sounds good.
Can we go to the budget, please?
Yes.
Everybody okay with going into the budget? Thank you.
Yeah.
Nancy, would somebody wake Nancy up? In front of the budget. Uh, Sean and Nancy are going to talk to us a little bit about the budget.
Sure. So as as we all know, the kindergarten revolving, and Nancy can talk about this a little bit more, our revolving accounts for kindergarten, transportation. So as we anticipate either a hybrid or remote, we're going to lose that revenue. So as part of the deficit, we revised our budget just so the revolving, kindergarten revolving typically takes in around $330,000. Transportation typically takes in around $200,000. Uh, so that's reflective in the adjustments that we're going to have to make as we move into the school year to make that up, so. Nancy, did you want to just follow up on some of that overview?
Um, yes, um, so we removed those two items. Preschool is still unknown at this time. We budgeted $200,000, but we really don't know if that's going to come in at half or a lower, but we'll adjust that as we go on. We did balance the budget by removing some items from our budget. We were able to take some curriculum items and move them to the ESSER grant. We were able to take away some money for the cafeteria because we paid for it out of this year's budget. My insurance came in under $20,000, so that was removed. We removed almost 25, $95,000 in supplies and materials. Going forward, the savings we have this year, because we froze the budget early, will go towards those items as we need them. We're not going to buy everything upfront because we don't really know what school's going to look like. And we're not sharing supplies and materials amongst the grades right now. So we'll order as we need them throughout the year. And the last item that was cut was substitutes. At this time, we don't know what we're going to need the substitutes. So again, we can add that back in later on with any savings we have throughout the year if we need them. And by doing these items, we were able to balance the budget and, which we can submit to the city council on Monday, but you will have to vote on it tonight.
Well, I can just add to that, and I'm very grateful, this was a very, very, very hard budget season for balancing our overall budget with the schools and city. The one piece that helped us was that came in, which is, I think, part of the reason why we had initially done the continuing appropriation was because we were hoping we'd get some more guidelines from the state. And guess what? It came through last week, that they're going to give us level funded local aid. So that helped tremendously in in helping us to balance the budget. So I appreciate all the work Nancy in particular has done, Sean, in terms of balancing this budget. So what we will be looking at is that the increase this year is 3.89% to the schools. But we also were able to move things into the ESSER grants. And so that will also, Nancy's going to work on that piece, and that will become part of the superintendent's budget message in the overall FY21 budget, talking about the, some of the curriculum supplies, the technology, which is part of another grant. Those things are also part of our operational budget. And we can account for those things in those other grant programs that are helping to support the operations of the schools. And what that percentage brings us up to is, I'm sure, well into the mid to high 4% range. And that's really where we were hoping to be this year, so I'm pleased about that. Thank you.
Are there questions for Nancy or Sean?
I have a question, Nancy. I was confused because I can't represent because everything's dead. On one line, it said 40-something thousand over dollars over budget. Look, I don't.
That's new hires.
What's that?
New hires. So new staff that's been hired, she had to replace either a retirement or resignation. They've come in over what we budgeted.
Okay. Uh, maybe Nancy wants to explain what an ESSER grant is to the people at home?
It's COVID money, that they just called it, because they separated it from the CARES grant, which was specific to cities and towns. And then there was a a separate pool of money that was set aside to help schools in terms of dealing with COVID expenses.
Okay, and those are a, what, a one-year?
Clear.
So next year, all the numbers that have been moved out of the way, if they're going to be needed to be found, be found again?
Yeah, so.
Right?
Yeah.
Do we have, sorry, do we have enough regular education instructional assistance to use as substitutes, or are these coming out of the special education team?
No, the, that's just part of, depending on what model we're utilizing. So it's almost like all staff, like hands on deck, and we're working with the unions on that. If there is an absent in, you know, working with the IAs where we can cover classes to help us with, you know, when teachers are absent.
We'll still have to replace those that are on long-term leave or out for a few months. Uh, we have one that's out for a year, we're replacing that now. And we have also looked at building subs if we wanted to go that route, which can come out of the other grant, not the ESSER grant, but another one if we decided to go that road.
Can I just ask a series of to-the-point, really crass questions? Um, this budget allows us to implement late start such as it is?
Yes.
Does this budget also allow us to expand the foreign language, world language offerings at the middle school?
Yes.
Yes.
And this budget also does not have layoffs in it?
Correct.
Correct.
And it's balanced?
Yes.
Yes.
That's why this was so hard.
Well, that's pretty satisfying to me.
Are there questions about the budget?
Thanks, Mike. I, you know, in in some ways too, as we talked about curriculum, we put off some curriculum initiatives because of the nature of how we're going to do school this year. So, you know, that's, I suppose, as far as balancing the budget, that was actually a positive that we find ourselves in the situation that we were in to be able to say that those things will be put out a year. Because you want to do a good implementation if you're going to do an implementation.
It's unfortunate because of all the advocacy and the work for years and years and years to get chapter 70 formula changed and to finally get that passed through the legislature only to have it all on hold at this point. But I guess, you know, in the worst-case scenario, we could have received a much lesser chapter 70 and local aid number, and to have them hold it for FY20 levels, you know, as opposed to a decreasing, you know, helps us. I mean, we don't know as we move forward into this fiscal year. You know, we experienced it in '07, I think it was, Bruce and Steve, you were on the the school committee at the time when we had devastating cuts. That's resulted in the closing of the Kelly School and the reorganization. And so, you know, we can hope at this point with significant rating day funds and who knows, that we are going to be able to make it through this year. And that was, you know, the main goal, you know, at least in terms of our our budget numbers. And I, again, I'm very grateful for all the hard work that everyone has done on both on city staff as well as school staff.
So I I also now have a technical question. I assume that we are voting on the bottom-line FY21 proposed school committee budget of $35,705,921. How does this affect, is that our annual budget? Is that?
That's the full annual.
That's the full annual budget. So so in effect, when we vote again in September for a nine-month budget?
Oh, no, this is it.
This is it. We're doing it for the whole year.
Yeah, this is the budget for the rest of the year. Because we were waiting for numbers and the the city council had specifically asked, you know, if there was, because they wanted, we typically give it to them the first meeting in May, gives them the opportunity through month of May and June, you know, early June, to be able to make a decision. So they wanted to have that same timeframe. So that's why we were trying to honor that request and get the full budget for the rest of the year to them by the 10th, which is Monday.
And this amount does include July, August, and September. It's for the full 12-month annual budget.
Do I have a a motion to approve the annual budget at the?
Some move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Sheila is seconding, Steve made the motion. Do we have discussion?
When it says we're going to be freezing budgets and cutting supplies and materials, at the same same time, all I'm hearing is the state asking schools to make sure we have more materials because we're not supposed to share materials this year.
COVID money. There's there's these two accounts, the ESSER and the CARES with school money that we can tap into for things like that.
So this line here that says 50%, we're cutting $95,000 out of the budget, out of the supplies and materials. So this line here that says 50%, we're cutting $95,000 out of the budget, out of the supplies and material budget and we're freezing the budget. There's, there's another line somewhere that says we're tapping into a grant to replace?
The amount of money that we can save by freezing the budget can be moved into any line item that we need through transfers to this finance subcommittee as the year progresses. So if there's something a school wants.
As well as use the, that, the special funds for supplies and materials.
So whatever the schools need, they will get.
Okay. It's just not reflected here, so I didn't.
Additional discussion?
Can we vote on this? It doesn't say in the agenda, but it's a possible vote.
I mean, we can, I would recommend you vote on it. And if there's not a valid vote, we can put it back on the agenda for Monday morning. That would only take a minute.
I think that's a, that's, that's a fair recommendation. Are we okay with that? Anybody object? Sean, do you object? Nancy's suggestion is that we vote on this and if it turns out that it's, because of the way it has been posted, it's not a valid vote that we would vote again on the 10th. Does that, does that work? Mayor Halliday, does that work for what we have to do with the, with the budget?
Well, I do have to get the budget printed into the city council by Monday, so I'm really out of time. I mean, we can certainly, I mean, just they will be vetting it anyway before it's finalized. So that if there are pages we have to take out, replace, and change, we will.
Can we simply take a motion to change the agenda item like we did to Dr. Sue earlier to say, hey, this is going to be now voted, so it's all on the up and up? Are we allowed to do that?
Yes.
I make a motion to change this agenda item to a possible vote even though it's not on there currently.
All right, say that again.
I'm making a motion to change this line item as a possible vote line item.
I'll second that.
Discussion. There are none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. There are no opposed. We are now able to move on the motion that was already.
Yes.
The motion that's on the table is to approve the figure of $35,705,921 for the FY20, FY21 budget year. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
There's a nay. Sean Riordan is a nay. Motion passes six to one. Next item on the agenda is the special meetings policy. Dave, do you want to talk to that?
Again, we already had a, a first reading a couple of months ago now probably and nothing has changed within it, so it really just spoke to the ability to call special meetings and that we should have public comment at special meetings. So there's really nothing special about the meetings other than that they're off calendar meetings. They're additional meetings in theory.
Motion to approve second reading of special.
Meeting.
Meeting policy.
Second. We have second, Sean Riordan is seconding it. Discussion. There are none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed. There's none opposed. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is the resolution.
One second before we go on. Sean, at some point, we still have to work out the, the software. I don't have the ability to actually update the policy book. So we got to figure out how we want, how we want to do that. Okay, sorry, Bruce, go ahead.
That's okay. The next item on the agenda is the resolution. My suggestion would be if there's going to be extended conversation about this, that we postpone it. But I'm certainly open to hearing what the staff, what the school committee has to say.
I would respectfully ask that we postpone this to the 17th.
Does anybody want to speak different, speak in opposition to that or differently? There are none. Why don't we move that to the 17th as well? We have a further discussion of the calendar and we have guidelines also on the 17th. Those are three items that have been moved to the 17th. Next item on the agenda is Superintendent Angela's report.
You know, this will be quick this evening just because Superintendent Gallagher spoke to many of the things that we were going to talk about as far as our online learning plans. And I think this is something that, you know, we'll be giving you a lot of detail about on, on Monday morning. So the one thing I did want to talk about was just the possibility of the remote academy so that everybody understood the difference. We had some conversation about that earlier, the difference between a hybrid plan where students would be learning remotely part of the time and in person part of the time and a fully remote plan, which would be our remote academy. And like I said, we're going to learn more information about what the state has to offer before we make a decision about how we're going to handle that. But it will be a separate academy and there will be some teachers assigned to that separate academy to oversee the work that the students are going to do there. So that's where we are right now. I will know more after Wednesday really about that. We got some preliminary information from the state. The platforms that the state had chosen looked like they were going to be pretty good. And they were all aligned to the standards and they met all of the expectations that the state has set. So I'm anxious to learn about that because I've got quite a few homeschool families lined up for meetings with me as well. So I just want them to be aware of that platform too that we're going to go with before they make their final decision around homeschooling. So those are all just other pieces to some of the things that Superintendent Gallagher spoke about tonight.
Can I ask you some questions about that?
Sure, you can. Of course.
You hinted earlier that it was going to be something we'd have to buy into, like we're buying seats or places in a piece of software?
Yes.
So when you say platform, you mean like virtual high school or something of that sort?
Yes, except it's not like, but it is. Yeah, it's not virtual high school, but yes. They're on learning, they're online learning platforms that have their own curriculum that are aligned to the standards. And the, we've only gotten one message about it so far. And it came in with some ranges of, some price ranges for the two different platforms that they were looking to get contracts with that the state was. So we've held aside some of our grant money so that if we do decide to move in this direction, we would be able to pay for our students or that would choose to take this strike.
I guess I'm just trying to, I'm starting to understand why, if we're going to have students at home learning remotely five days a week, even if it's group A versus group B, why couldn't a student just be at home five days a week? Why do we have to pay for somebody else's platform if we have something viable and in district?
I think part of the consideration around that is staffing in the way to manage, for the things that staff are going to have to manage already. So students who are learning completely remote are going to be a little bit different than those students who are in part of the time because the times that they're in, the teachers hope to maximize the remote learning that they're doing through some of the things that they're doing live with them. So it's going to be a little, it'll be a different experience than what it will be.
I'm sorry, Sean, you said something to the point where we're thinking about the kids being remote here in Newbury Fort, they would be live streaming into a class.
It's part of the, it's part of our planning, so, and not, not at all grade levels at the live streaming. But for some grade levels and some classes, that's a possibility. The, as part of the remote academy, this is not a Newbury Fort idea. This is a state idea and other, other local superintendents. And we're kind of talking because you are going to have some staff that aren't going to be able to come in because of health issues. So this is an opportunity for us to utilize the staff that are going to be remote full-time themselves, but also working with students that are going to be full-time remote to the remote academy, so.
I guess I'll just wait to hear more of it because.
Yeah, exactly.
That just doesn't make any sense to me. If we have teachers who can't come in the building, I would think that they could help strengthen the curriculum we're going to be using when our own kids, all of our kids are remote or out of the building, whatever you want to call it, as opposed to buying into some other program. And at the same time, if there's some other program that's that much better than what we're offering, we should probably all be offering that.
Well, I think those are all the things we're, we're learning about. Nothing's off the table with this and no final decisions have been made. So, you know, let's learn more and then we could talk further about it.
Yeah, something that's weird, just on a side note, that the governor is saying at the same time that he wants to push to get everybody back in the building, but he also wants districts to buy into some remote academy program.
Correct.
Like whose pockets are those filling?
Well, and I think, you know, as we said, everything is fluid and we, we receive information on a weekly basis. And this, yeah, right. And the, and the remote academy piece is just another piece of information that is coming out and there's a conference call tomorrow explaining what the state's going to be offering. So, yeah, as Assistant Superintendent Pick said, it's, it's fluid. We, we receive information and then we, we make adjustments. I mean.
Well, I think, you know, in fairness, the, the need for the state to take some action in this area came from the weekly conversations with the commissioners because the districts were saying, you know, the districts were expressing how hard it's going to be to manage the variety of programs. And so there was a request at that time to the commissioner to, if we have certain students that are going, that families are making a decision not to send them back and they're going to be fully remote, is there a way that the state can help with that piece and have something consistent for students that are in that situation across the state and kind of take that off of plates of the local districts? So that, that's how this came to be. Now, at the time that all that conversation was happening, we thought that would be free, the state would develop that and then that would be available to school districts to have.
Do you think there's any possible correlation between the fact that there are federal funds available to pay for that and the decision to charge for it?
You know, I just, you know, I think, I think when the conversation came up, you know, when everybody went out of school last March, we accessed New York City's plans. New York City did a beautiful job developing remote plans for the entire city for every grade level, every content area, and it was all open source. It was the perfect model, you know? And so I think, I, I know that's what, I can only speak for myself. That's kind of what I had in mind. I was saying, wow, you know, it would be great if the Massachusetts Department of Ed would duplicate something like that or use something like that. It would be very helpful. But, but, you know, they made a decision to move in this direction instead, so. So we're going to learn a little, little more about it and see if it's a viable option.
Any other questions for Angela? I turn it over to Superintendent Sean Gallagher.
Yes, I mean.
I just want to say one more thing. Excuse me, Sean. I did want to say, one of the pieces that I think is going to be so important about our hybrid model that we didn't talk about tonight is that it provides us the opportunity to really teach our students how to learn.
Speak up, Angela.
I said, I think doing the hybrid model, something we didn't talk about tonight is that it provides us the opportunity to teach our students how to learn remotely when they're not in front of us. And I think that's a very important component that we just didn't have the opportunity to do last spring when we left so urgently. And by having the students in part of the time and out part of the time, having the teachers work with the, with our students to actually teach them how to maximize their time when they're not in front of the teacher, I think will be a huge benefit for our students. So I just, I didn't want to forget about that. Thank you, Bruce.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be brief. We had our first training on July 17th with Michael Eadman with the extended leadership team. It was a great day, great, great training, looking at cultural competency and really self-examining a lot of our practices and our beliefs. And as we said, we're looking to work with Mr. Eadman throughout the school year and then bring a lot of those, I guess, characteristics and training down to the, the faculty. So it was, it was just a great, great time to really focus on something that, you know, other than COVID and reopening schools, a whole nother area of education. And Mr. Eadman is phenomenal. So we were really excited for our first training. We have another training. I believe it's scheduled on August 13th, to work with Mr. Eadman again and start to continue our planning for the faculty and, and a little issue, so.
Terrific. Thank you. Subcommittee reports. Finance will be meeting at some point.
Yeah, I think we're going to shoot for next week.
Policy?
We don't have a date yet for August, but we did meet last week. We had a really good discussion about fundraising. So maybe on the 17th, if there's time, we could work through some of those talking points. We also, as I listed in the email, I said to everybody, we found a couple of other policies scattered throughout the policy book that talk about fundraising and what's called gifts being received by the district. And so I, I think there's a bunch of different things we're going to have to clarify and make sure that they work together. There's one policy about gifts to the district that said the school committee has to approve everything. There's another one that talks about crowdfunding but doesn't have any definition of what crowdfunding is. So just, we're a lot closer than we were in the spring, but I think there's still some, some work we need to do and then some ideas we need to share. So if there's time on the 17th, if not, we'll do it in September.
Dave, can I ask if policy is going to, through the work I know that you're doing on the district committee, is policy going to be taking a look at any policies that might need to be modified for the next school year? Operation policies that we've got or anything like that?
We haven't come up with anything. Sean said that we might have to talk about teachers traveling.
Yep.
But I don't know if we have a policy on that now, but because of the governor's mandate that people coming in and out of Massachusetts, depending on where they go, need to be quarantined, we might need to figure out how to word that and what that's going to look like. I'm assuming the union's going to have something to say about that too.
And then just for tonight, as we move forward with in-person school committee meetings, policy, we should probably look at some policy around public comment. And then how we're going to go about doing that, you know, either in person or via Zoom down the road. That's going to look a little bit different, I think, for all of us.
I mean, I, I will say that throughout the media, I've been getting texts and stuff telling people saying they just can't hear anything we're saying. telling people saying they just can't hear anything we're saying.
Yeah.
Part of that has to do with the masks, part of that has to do with the echo.
Correct.
Part of that has to do with, you know, the distance, like, so we're not shouting at people, like, we're pretending as if we're next to each other, and we're not.
Right. The, the other piece for the listeners is we're, our video on cable right now, it's not live, but this meeting will also be posted, so you'll be able to hear all of us throughout. That was, that was our intent to go live tonight.
As awesome as I think we are, I don't think anybody wants to watch this twice.
I always watch it back, just to take notes.
Maybe if we, maybe if we can get the subtitle version, so people can read along instead, that'd be better.
Or maybe we can get the sort of superintendent, like, director's comments running through the meeting, something to make it more interesting.
We're going to need to look at the attendance policy. We're going to need to look at attendance policy.
Okay.
With, I would think, with the hybrid plan, and if it's going to be mandated, some, some parents of younger students may have other younger children in a private preschool, and maybe they have to drop them off, I'm just thinking of this scenario, and they're going to end up being late, their child, because their child will probably need help logging on. So just things like that, we're going to have to think about these scenarios.
Yeah. Well, MASC, MASC provided it, all of us, we could keep a list.
Yes, those lists.
To go through, just to see.
A lot less.
It is a pretty long list, and I don't think that everything needs to be changed, but.
I will, I will just say, like, I don't, I don't think we have an attendance policy, per se. I think we have some building-level practices, but I don't know if, like, being late or something like that is actually in the policy book anywhere, as far as, like, the ramifications or the consequences. Like, I know.
Right.
You know, Mr. Wolf and the high school team came up with a bunch of new rules, but I don't, those aren't policies, those are just building practices. So at some level, we'll have to figure out what's what and what we, what we do want to change, but, you know, that list is probably a pretty good start.
Mm-hmm.
That's a good point.
Education did not meet, and superintendent evaluation has not met. Does anybody have anything else they would like to add?
Can, can I just say that I was in a conversation last week, and it turns out that we were absolutely supposed to write a superintendent evaluation this year? Because those were not taken off the table because of the, the closure, closure. And so we need to figure out, Sean, I'm assuming that's, that reflects on you somehow, that the state's going to, at some point, I don't, I don't know how that works, I don't know how anybody holds us accountable for doing that, but according to MASC and the state superintendent, or at least whoever runs the Twitter feed, at the state superintendent committee, we were supposed to have done an evaluation this year. So I'm also not sure where we got the information that we weren't, but we need to go back and put that together.
Okay. Certainly sounds like an agenda item.
Go on.
Do I have a motion to?
Second.
Nobody had any trouble hearing me then.
I didn't hear you, I just assumed.
All those in favor? Motion was Steve and Sheila seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody who's opposed can just continue to sit here.